We are quickly going to reconvene, do a poll, a roll call, a roll call, and then move into a brief icebreaker, and then get into the materials. So have we joined the WebEx?
We're doing it right this second.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions about tech support or anything before we get started?
Okay.
Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the December 1st, 2023 special meeting of the San Francisco Elections Commission by President Stone. The time is now at 21:00 PM. All the members are to order. Secretary Davis, will you please proceed with the roll call?
Yes. President Stone.
President.
Vice President Jeromich.
Here.
Commissioner Bernholtz.
Here.
Commissioner Parker.
Here.
Commissioner Dye.
Here.
Commissioner Hayden Crowley.
Here.
And then Commissioner in the role seat, excuse that sentence.
Thank you. So we have a floor. If it gets too noisy, I may end up closing one of the doors. Yeah, thank you so much. And just as a brief announcement for folks who are joining us from the public, we will be continuing to follow the rules of conduct and participation for this meeting. Each agenda item will have three minutes of public comment available. You'll also be able to try general public comment or be the end of the agenda as well. Let me do the... The San Francisco Elections Commission acknowledges that we are on unceded ancestral homeland for the indigenous community, what our original inhabitants of San Francisco. As the indigenous stewards of this land in accordance with their traditions, the indigenous community have proceeded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as caretakers of this place, as well as for all people to reside in your traditional territory. As guests, we recognize and benefit from living and working on our traditional homeland. We wish to pay our respects by acknowledging the indigenous relatives of the indigenous community and affirming their sovereignty. Okay. So we're going to do a little bit of a trivia, just to warm up. It's all fun and games, but it is... We're going to project it on the screen. It's going to operate kind of like Jeopardy!, but it isn't really Jeopardy! You don't have to answer in a specific, you know, a specific way. It's just a kind of a form that gives us a new meat environment that we're in. Hopefully, we'll be able to see this through. Just go to the quick slideshow at the top right. Maybe go to the next slide. Okay, good. That's not bad. Okay, so how this will operate, and we don't have to run through the whole thing. It's not that many, not that many questions, but you can just raise your hand to be the first to ask more questions, and then the first to raise their hand will have the first opportunity to answer the question, to get it right, depending on how much money you have. There may or may not be sugar provided to the winner or to everyone, even though we already have access to sugar at the table. So would anyone like to guess? Okay. San Francisco elections for 100. Okay. Do you click on the 100? Okay, San Francisco elections for 100. In what year did race choice voting first appear on the San Francisco ballot? Commissioner Hayden Crowley.
2004.
And then you can just click at the bottom. That's correct. So thank your American, you have the opportunity to go back to...
I'll do the San Francisco elections for 200.
So, yes, San Francisco elections for 200. How many physical places can voters cast ballots in San Francisco?
Over 500. Is it over 500?
You can go there to answer. That is correct. 538, or 531 points per election, so it's in drop boxes. Okay?
Hey, did you include votes on it?
Yes, there is a question. Oops. So I want you. You can press on the right when you have the understanding. Okay, so we're going to do 300. Okay. Now it's 300. Okay, San Francisco elections for 300. When was the first municipal election held in San Francisco? And bonus, how many ballots were over, Chris?
I'm purchasing when, what is 1842?
And you have a guess on how many voters?
Um, maybe 10,000?
Okay, go to the next one. You have the answer.
1846.
So the answer is 1846, and there are 96.
But we worked in San Francisco.
You're a Republican?
The first, the first year of voting in San Francisco elections.
Okay, well, see.
Now for question 10. Okay. Since Commissioner Hayden Crowley did not successfully ask, but another commissioner would like to take a stab at Elections Commission or Department of Elections.
Elections Commission for 300.
Okay.
Rick, you've stolen all that.
Our Elections Commission for 300 made three paid proponents of Part E, which established the contemporary Elections Commission. Bonus 50 if you can also name a opponent.
It's the California Clinton campaign. Who is legal women voters? Who is common cause? And I have no idea who it is.
All right, I'll do 50 for a partner. Who's 50, huh?
The answer to all of them.
Go to the front of the answer. I don't have to check. I don't think legal women, I didn't see legal women voters, but now I'm questioning.
Oh, no, that's a trick.
They were trick question.
Yeah.
But I will check on the legal women voters. I know for sure the money campaign was not fair.
They didn't exist.
And common cause wasn't a good lead. Now I'm going to have to do...
But they can normally pay for these kind of things.
I don't have them on my list, but now I'm starting to...
Yeah, no, but I think that's right.
Well, I thought it was interesting if we see the diversity, the diversity of the different votes, and that there were no complaints. Okay.
Wait a second. What was Citizens Advisory Committee?
It was the Citizens Advisory Committee of Elections. It was in 2001?
Yeah.
Citizens Advisory Committee.
Elections Committee.
No, it was a separate body. No, not the same. I read a little bit while preparing. I'm not an expert. Okay, let's move on to...
So who's...
We're all winners.
You're the only one who can gaze at that double jeopardy where you can like...
Commissioner Bernholtz, would you like to do 200 elections?
No.
Department of Elections for 300? Okay. High roller, high roller. Okay, Department of Elections for 300. What is the average number of ballots processed during a major election? Sorry, we're going to report something else. Let's say, how about we say it last time?
What is 250,000?
What is...
I mean, is it 2400?
Yeah.
Should we... Voters times 4. Voters times 3 or 4. Usually that... I know there are like...
Oh, you're right.
I'm sorry, it's at least 4. Five or six seems way too many.
Well, at least 1 million.
Okay, answer?
Oh, Lord, that was...
Wow. But it's, it is between 1.6 and 2 million, so...
Well, I was like 250,000.
What did you say? But you said 1.6.
No, you said 250,000.
I was thinking of voters on ballots.
Do we have another, someone else who would like to take Department of Elections for 200? Let's do it. Department of Elections for 200. What is the most amount of elections the department has?
What is 4?
Or 6?
No?
No!
So it's a lot of tricks. It's a lot of tricks. 4, 4 is the runner-up answer. This includes the elective office measures, because this is what the department has to operate. So it's fair to, it's fair game, so. Okay, let's go back. We have, what, three more questions to do? Okay, Department of Elections for 100. Let's go. What is the average range number of roll calls the department feels around elections?
For what? Just for the whole season?
For around election, I guess.
85,000. What is 85,000?
The answer is actually much smaller. I thought it could be much higher as well, besides John making this answer, so I just addressed that one. Okay, let's go Elections Commission, what, 200?
200.
And then we'll finish it. How many supervisors voted in favor of placing Proposition E on the 2001 ballot? Bonus if you can name at least three.
What is 11? And 2 is our question.
Yeah, I was going to say, that was a good guess. Would I give my last guess? Anyone, any other? Others?
Several, several.
Probably several, that's why. Doors, door. You know, it's actually... Daily? First daily guy.
10.
There you go.
Okay, Elections Commission for 100, and then we'll close out.
2002, we didn't vote for it. I think it was 10, not 11.
I'll go back, I'll get back to it. Let's get... Yeah.
What is 2002?
Oh, all right. Okay, so yeah, this is the easy question. In what year was the current Elections Commission established?
March 1992.
And bonus 50 if you can name the year the first Elections Commission was established in San Francisco. Any more?
1936.
Well, that was one that... 1936 was when the new charter was established.
Which one is it?
1932, not 1936.
Any answers?
1932. Oh. Oh. 1932. What it was passed, not...
Yeah, at least passed in that group, we could say in 2002, 2002, too.
Yeah. Because I'm going to get that. Pretty badly, I mean, it's like, oh, they love that.
But...
All they were trick questions.
So we're all winners. I hope that's candy for everyone.
The monos orios, where our elections can be done.
I was just going to make us think who had the highest, and make it the first to pick. But I think it worked out. My first time, yeah. So we win, we draw the other one. For everyone to pass. And also, you're all never going to have a weapon to do it. So thank you for appeasing me.
Actually, that was fun.
Right, thank you for appeasing me. With that, I... There's so much more trivia. One of the, one of the amazing, one of the amazing things that John shared with me as well, and we're going to share this trivia, is the most amount of paid ballot arguments ever included in voter information packets.
Oh.
300, which is, I thought, a lot. I thought that was really interesting. Yeah. I mean, I'm thinking about the size of those voter information packets. So thank you for appeasing me. Hope that was fun. You learned something. Let's move to public comment. And if you have public comment, you just raise your hand, and we will give you a three-minute time. Do you want me to set the timer?
Yeah.
Is this just general public comment?
No, this is about the...
Yes.
No, it's about the...
Icebreaker.
The icebreaker.
Just for the public comment.
Okay. We have three minutes. No, you don't want it? Okay. Is there anyone online that would like to make public comment?
No hands, no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. We'll close out that agenda item, Agenda Item Number 4, and we'll save Agenda Item Number 5, Open Source Voting 101, and I will hand this over to Vice President Jeromich.
Okay, thank you, President Stone. So first, a little bit of housekeeping. So for members of the public, I already made this change, but for commissioners, if you could take the documents, this discussion, and just remove the third page, and then add this page to the... Okay, so for this item, I want to start out by reviewing the schedule for the item. Basically, open source voting has come up a few times over the past couple of years, and we haven't really, since then, we haven't really ever had a chance to kind of just educate ourselves about some of the history behind it, and, you know, why is open source voting important? And we really just have more time to kind of ask open-ended questions about it, make some gaps in our knowledge. So the purpose of this item is to basically give ourselves that opportunity, and then to end with sort of a strategy session about how we can finally bring open source voting to San Francisco. Because as you'll see during this item, this is an issue that goes way back, and we're going to have a chance to see a lot of the discussions supervised, we're having as far back as 2007. So we're going to start out with a bunch of short video clips that I kind of curated, and I'll say a few words about each one, and the guy has a list of all the links. And then for the next portion, unfortunately, Matt Rowe couldn't attend today. He had a personal emergency that came up this morning, but he did offer to have a demo for us at a later date that could even incorporate more work. And then next, we're going to have Trent Lane as an invited speaker, and he's eyes away, he'll be here in about 10 minutes. And he, as you'll see throughout the item, he's been a major force in advancing open source voting in the more recent years, and has a lot of knowledge to share. And then we'll end with a more general brainstorming strategy session to kind of use what we found. So, and then close with public comment. Are there any questions about this schedule, or... So let's, let's move to the video clips, and because Matt Rowe is not coming today, we are going to have a little bit more time. So I'd like to encourage you to, if you have any questions about, you know, where is this video from, or what's this here, go for 11, man. So we're going to, this may take a few minutes to kind of settle how we're going to do the audio and video for this, but I'm just going to... So this is new.
Look, you're right.
What's that?
But you'll probably bring... Too long, need to connect.
Well, yeah, I'll try this first.
Leave stuff in your computer.
Evan, when you put light?
I'm going to just try it out.
This one's beautiful.
Good afternoon, thank you very much. My name is Steven Bennett. I represent Sequoia Voting Systems, and our position from last week and after discussing...
Okay, so the first video is, back in 2007, the Board of Supervisors had a series of about four different hearings to discuss an upcoming voting system contract with Sequoia. And back then, they were very interested in incorporating some kind of open source requirements into their contract. So this exchange is between Supervisor Daly asking Steven Bennett, who's the sales representative, of Sequoia, you know, can you commit to making the code open source? So let's... From Sequoia.
Welcome. Good afternoon, thank you very much. My name is Steven Bennett. I represent Sequoia Voting Systems, and our position from last week and after discussing with management, we do agree with the request from the people of San Francisco to be able to have more transparency in their voting systems, and we'll work with this board, this committee, and the people in San Francisco.
In terms of willingness to include some language that's been kicking around in terms of publishing your code on a website, or with the ready-to-use open technology, or on this quality system?
Yes.
You are willing or not willing to include any contract provisions, you include that?
We are willing to include language that will have the source code.
And you are not willing to just publicly disclose your source code?
On the internet, no, we have an issue with that currently.
Okay, so that was, you know, one exchange. So a little bit later in the year, Supervisor Tom Amiano introduced the resolution to first here in San Francisco to pilot an open source voting system, so I'll play that clip. Very, this is very short.
A resolution supporting the trial of an open source voting system supported by grants funds. The sooner we have a reliable open source software, the sooner we can have confidence about transparency restored to the electoral process.
Okay, so that was, that was 16 years ago, something similar to what we have. Okay, the next is going to be another...
Teams that will help you get...
Another, there are going to be three segments from another one of the Board of Supervisors appearance on the Sequoia contract. So the first is a clip from, again, Tom Amiano.
And they have agreed to a third-party inspection of the source code, and I think that's a step forward. I know some people are not satisfied with that, which is understandable, but this is not exactly a robust, vital industry. It's morbid, if anything, and we are the ones who really should be setting the standards, particularly given the state of that industry. On the open source subject, the push for open source is in its very beginning stages. This is not the end in the interim period between now and what this contract last came up to us for a code. But I think a lot of us have been very educated around the issue and the necessity to have open source voting systems as soon as we can. And I think there are a number of steps that the board can take to ensure that we move forward full speed to achieve greater voting security and confidence in getting open source system sooner rather than later, and it's going to take some serious planning and research. One thing is the open...
Okay. So then later in the meeting, Director Ernst is going to be talking about one of the provisions that was added to the Sequoia contract. And this is actually really interesting. I learned about this last night, I'll display it for you.
So, and also, and also, a third aspect is if another vendor were to come forward in California during the term of this contract, they had an open source or disclosed source system that was certified at the Secretary of State's office, then Sequoia is obligated to disclose its software source code, or to actually have its system developed in a way that it would be open source or disclosed source, and have it bring forward the certification at the federal level first within a year's time.
So that's interesting. I actually had a provision that if, during the course of the contract, if another vendor came forward that got certified, they would have to disclose their code, which is amazing. And then...
I'm sorry, can we presume that that just didn't happen?
Right. I think they probably were... Okay.
Sorry, I just wanted to fill up my question. Is that, is that California law? What law wired this to be up?
It was the contract that they agreed to.
Just the contract.
Yeah, and I did find a board resolution that discusses the contract. I wasn't able to find a contract for it. Okay, so next, the Board of Supervisors formed what was called a Voting System Task Force back in, I think, 2009, I think. And it was a nine-member body that met for a couple of years, and they came up with some recommendations around voting systems, and some of those recommendations were around open source. And this video I'm going to show you is a segment of the meeting where they presented their final report, and it's Supervisor John Avalos asking one of the members about open source voting.
Great, thank you, Sanford. Thank you for your presentation and for your work on this issue. I recall there was a fairly robust debate back in 2007 as we were gearing up for approval of the Sequoia contract. I wasn't on the board at that time, I was the legislative aide, and I do recall there was a great deal of talk about going to an open source system, development of technologies here in San Francisco, that we could avail ourselves here with the talent that could create that technology, that software here in San Francisco, and not looking elsewhere. And remember, that was, I wonder if that was a discussion of the task force in your report?
The last section of Chapter 2 looks into millet and acquisition models, and we did do an examination of the possibilities around open source. It is, it's a complex topic, and there's a lot of energy around that idea in the community. So we did look at it, and you can see some of our analysis there in that last section, acquisition strategies. We do think that something the city should, should keep an open mind towards, absolutely.
So I mentioned that open source has this software issue, there's also hardware issue as well, and on the hardware issue, in your exploration of that topic, what did you find?
My name is Jim Silver, by the way. The current voting system's free, specialized hardware, and anytime you can go to standard off-the-shelf components, it's a new PC, looks like this, would be better on, because it is less likely to, more likely to know what's inside, and it's likely to be cheaper. So where you can get standard off-the-shelf components still would be better.
So if we are, you know, we could probably have simple cost savings in terms of software by not open source, but in terms of purchasing or finding the hardware to run those are different bull insights, is that going to be, would that be a major problem, a major financial hurdle for us to go up as a city if we're going to move to an open source system?
Your biggest problem is getting access to a fully certified system, and there is none right now.
Okay, so now flash forward about three years, and Supervisor, then Supervisor Scott Meier introduced the resolution to basically... introduced the resolution to basically move forward on those recommendations to basically start pursuing ourselves developing this sort of system. So this is, he was introducing his resolution and report.
In addition, today I'm introducing a resolution to put us on record in favor of moving firmly towards open source voting in San Francisco. Free and paralitions are cornerstone of our democracy. We need to continue to push for more transparency, more security, and more accurate election results. So this resolution will move us toward the creation of free open source voting systems for elections in San Francisco. Open source voting means that the technology used to administer elections is publicly available, allowing for greater accountability and transparency. Our current system, private vendors holding proprietary software that is unavailable for review, limits public accountability and oversight. The goal is to have certified and freely shareable voting technology, which will enhance the quality, security, and availability of voting systems. Will increase security and shareable code can be viewed publicly. If there are flaws in the system, people can view them, and people can flag them and make sure that they get fixed. And having a shareable code will reduce costs. Other than an initial investment to create the code, the only ongoing expense for counties will be hardware. And counties can use off-the-shelf computers, tablets, and printers. They'll no longer have to rely on expensive proprietary private licensing contracts with vendors. Currently, California spends more than $100 billion a year to run elections, a rate of $10 per ballot cast. The state has begun to pave the way for us to move towards open source. Last year, State Senator Alex Padilla introduced and passed through the legislature Senate Bill 360, which provides the regulatory relief necessary for open voting systems. In the wake of this legislation, an organization was formed called the California Association of Voting Officials, or CAVO. This organization was formed to push for shareable open source voting systems. CAVO has the support of sixteen other California counties, as well as organizations like the Equal Justice Society and the National Organization of Women. The resolution I'm introducing today will request that San Francisco become a member of CAVO and join efforts to make open source voting a reality. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Supervisor Wiener.
In addition...
So incidentally, the regulatory framework he's referring to there is the thing it took ten years for the Secretary of State to actually make those regulations. And that was done by someone. Okay, next, there's a very short clip of...
When they did it last summer, did they already, was there a deadline that they already passed? Specifically, that they were allowed us to explore it? But CAVO just reminded me this morning. Wasn't there a plan to have it prior to that date for the competition? Or you just reminded me?
Yeah, so before we went to do the pilot, we knew that these regulations had been in place. So the summer before the board introduced the ordinance, President Shimon Walton wrote a letter to the Secretary of State saying, there was actually a provision in state law to like request that regulations be developed, and they have to do it within a certain number of days. And they did not meet that deadline. So they took, maybe turn, I don't have more information, but they kind of took like a year and a half longer than you. Okay, so this one is a very short, it's Secretary of State Alex Padilla, who's now the former Senator, speaking about open source voting system during a news show.
Open source, that we have some ultimate transparency and accountability for all. But at the end of the day, that's a decision for these counties to make for themselves.
Oh, geez! Oh, God! Oh, my God!
I was worried about this. So next, we move forward, and now we're getting into the period of time where Trent Lang and his organization became involved. And you can see his organization is going to start to be mentioned. But this is Supervisor Julia Cohen, basically calling for a hearing on open source.
Next, I have the supervisor call. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sure you are aware that California Clean Money Campaign has been advocating for the development and the implementation of an open source voting system here in San Francisco. Today, I sent a letter to our colleagues in the state legislature indicating my support for an open source voting in San Francisco. I asked Senator Wiener, as well as Assemblyman Chu, to advocate for matching funds at the state level for this program. I've heard from thousands of our citywide constituents over the last 24 hours alone about the interest in and hope for this open source voting system. So colleagues, what I'm doing today is I'm introducing a hearing to better understand the demands of open source voting. I want to understand the investment required over what time horizon that it would be spent. I want to lay out a timeline for developing and implementing a new system and how that interacts with our existing vendor contracts, if at all. I believe that we must seek out experts to educate us on how the open source voting is developed, most importantly paying attention to the security of the system relative to our existing system. And I look forward to the thoughtful and educational discussion and hope that you will be involved in this very important matter.
Okay, so now, the next few clips are from the hearing that Supervisor Cohen called. And this is a hearing basically to raise money for, not raise money, but yeah. And the first one's me, actually, speaking for the words of the president.
And fifth, national leadership. Every state red and blue alike needs better election security, very short of money. And if San Francisco leads, every state in the country would benefit. And in turn, we benefit because how our leaders are elected in other states affects the U.S. as a whole, including the presidency. So in March, the Elections Commission unanimously voted to support three different things. First, to request at least $4 million for the 2018-19 fiscal year. Second, to ask the mayor and budget chair to support Assemblymember Chu and Senator Wiener's budget request of $8 million in state matching funds. And third, to support the technical advisory committee's recommendations of next steps of what should be allocated first in terms of funding.
Okay, so the next is Christine Bosie in Trent Lang, shortly after...
Asked. They could say it's not about the money, but it's about the money. What we can do, rather than continuing to spend hundreds of millions of dollars on machines that people don't trust, where corporations are making profit off of our elections, we can instead move to open source and, as the commissioner indicated, do so in a way that is agile. This is a feminist issue. More women, more people of color, more people with disabilities, more grassroots candidates will be elected if we have clean money campaigns and if we have open source voting. Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughtful comments. Appreciate it. Trent, which panel down?
Trent Lang, president of the California Clean Money Campaign, and a recovering PhD in computer science, so I can speak to some of these technical things. I will not be particularly. I want to speak to the fact that normally California Clean Money Campaign focuses on issues of campaign finance reform because people need to be able to trust the election process and that their candidates aren't owing allegiance to big money. But when we polled our 150,000 supporters across California after our big California disclosed that victory last year, they said that the integrity and security and transparency of their elections with open source voting was absolutely one of their top concerns for all those reasons that Christine pointed out. So we have been working with Assemblymember Chu and Senator Wiener on the state budget proposal. We absolutely congratulate the incredible work being done here in San Francisco, especially by the Elections Commission in moving this forward to put San Francisco in place to move forward. But we understand that the $12 million or so it would take is a lot for one jurisdiction. Therefore, this proposal is moving forward with a in the state budget process. That provide up to $8 million in matching funds to a county to develop an open source project such as been proposed here. If it is done, any parts that are done by the 2020 election and tested and then certified...
All right, and this is Supervisor Stephanie, and then Cohen again. Stephanie, in the room.
Supervisor Stephanie.
Thank you, Chair Cohen. I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out today and for their advocacy on this extremely important issue and for the emails that I received as well. And I agree that this is essential to protect our democracy. I learned a great deal from this hearing today, and I want to thank my colleagues, Supervisor Cohen, for shedding light on the issue and continuing this discussion on how we can make this a reality in San Francisco. I do look forward to taking a deeper dive on this and looking how we can partner with our regional, with counties as well. So I think there's a lot to be learned, a lot more to be learned. It's very complex. So I will be following up with our departments. And like I said, this is an extremely important topic, and I do thank everyone for their advocacy on it. It's very necessary. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to thank everyone that came out to participate in this hearing and thank you for turning out support to the Clean Money Campaign. I think it was very thoughtful and important. I think this is a good first step for us to continue to momentum and to continue to move forward. So with that, colleagues, I'm going to make a motion to file this hearing as heard and...
Okay. So then the next thing is an interesting clip from a registrar, former registrar, Kami Foot, from Inyo County, was testifying before the Little Hoover Mission, which is a bipartisan group that, but that's dead later, endorsed open source voting in California. So she has some really interesting comments around vendor lock-in. This is insert.
Development of open source voting systems. We've had a lot of questions about that. I'm a good proponent of it. The state can incentivize the development, procurement, and use of open source software in both capulation systems. We've talked about the many different benefits, but I would like to go into a little bit of the lock-in situation of what vendor to lock in and what that means for a county system. I have a good working relationship with my voting system vendor, so I don't want to seem as negative. But what happens is I just purchased their new system. I'm locked in for eight years with this vendor. If legislation in California changes all the time, if there's upgrades to the system that needs to be made, the voting system vendor may or may not be able to invest, depending on what it is. Like, for instance, when Prop 14 happened, the top two, our voting system vendor provided a human workaround to be able to report accurately. But that legacy system was never modified because the certification is quite expensive and lengthy, and it wasn't worth it for this vendor to be able to do that, knowing that there was a human workaround that wasn't perfect, but was okay. So that's just one example. What vendor lock-in, the situation is, customers are dependent on a single supplier for a product and cannot move to another vendor without substantial cost or inconvenience. If I wanted to vote in another vendor, I have to purchase a whole new voting system. Lock-in tends to raise costs substantially, reduces long-term value, including functionality, innovation, and reliability, and can become a serious security problem since the supplier has little incentive to provide a secure product in a regulatory environment that does not allow vendors to quickly fix problems. So when you talk...
Okay. So the next is an interesting statement. I attended an event at K3D in San Francisco where Secretary Shirley Webel was the guest, and also former Governor Jerry Brown was also in attendance. And you can see what Terry Brown said about open source voting.
Probably getting engaged in that process.
Yeah, okay. Thanks for...
There is a risk with all this cyber power. Yeah, you turn off, they can start a nuclear bomb attack, they can turn off your hospital with power, can they jam the electric? It's all secret, secret, but it may be that people can do that. So these voting machines have to be squeaky clean, perfect, open observation. We got to know, there could be no obscurity here, nothing, nothing. That's what open source means. I'm all for it. Yeah.
Okay, so now we're moving into the final videos where we're going to, when President Walton introduced his ordinance to do the pilot. So we'll first, this is the one where he requests ready through the legislation.
President Walton.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Today, colleagues, I'm requesting legislation from the city attorney to authorize an open source voting pilot in San Francisco for the November 2022 election, which will require the San Francisco Department of Elections to submit a plan to the Secretary of State no later than February 8, 2022. In the United States and California, we rely on a for-profit model from election equipment security and one that is costly and lacks transparency. Open source voting will allow the city's IT teams to work with vendors on voting equipment software because it uses publicly available computer code. The proposed pilot will give voters in City Hall Voting Center the option of using VotingWorks' accessible ballot marking device. I also understand that Director Ernst is already working with VotingWorks on details and a contract for the pilot. This legislation will codify that process. Earlier in August, I sent a letter along with President David Canepa of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors to the California Secretary of State requesting her office adopt regulations governing voting system pilot programs as required under Senate Bill 360, which was passed in 2013. Open source voting was also supported by former Secretary of State Alex Padilla. San Francisco has a long history of advocating for an open source voting system, starting with former Supervisor Tom Amiano with a resolution looking into the feasibility of an open source voting system in 2007, and a resolution from former Supervisor Scott Wiener supporting the creation of an open source voting system in 2014. Open source voting will allow the public to own these voting systems and ensure that our elections are fair, honest, and secure. The rest I salute.
So this is the next one.
The first piece of legislation I'm introducing today is an ordinance to authorize an open source voting.
Shopify point-of-sale system helps you sell at every stage of your business. Need a fast and secure way to take it?
This legislation will allow the Department of Elections to submit a pilot for review with the Secretary of State before February 8, 2022. This has been a long time coming, and I would like to thank then Supervisors Tom Amiano and Scott Wiener for supporting the creation of an open source voting system. I would also like to thank Elections Commissioner Chris Jernick and Trent Lang, the director of California Clean Money Campaign, for their advocacy on this. I also want to thank Deputy City Attorney Anna Flores for helping draft this legislation, Elections Director John Ernst for moving forward with this project, and my Chief of Staff Natalie G for helping to make this happen.
Okay. And then the last one is sort of the aftermath of the pilot where we didn't get to do the pilot, but this is Matt Rowe, basically saying that they're still open to doing pilot, that's more than... During our meetings.
Now, I would like to just go into record here that voting was open to supporting a larger scope pilot program. This is not, the specifics of this program were continually de-scoped and minimized as we went along to make this as easy as possible to approve. And even with that, we still received resistance in the process, including from the Secretary of State's office.
So if I'm understanding correctly, if you...
So if I'm understanding correctly, if you had the support of Secretary of State and our Director Arns, you could have a pilot also include...
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. But I know I'm not, that's not what you proposed. That's not what was projected in the letter. Am I reading that right?
I'm responding to the previous question that if there is a plan, a pilot plan approved with support from Director Arns and the Secretary of State's office for a more complete pilot program that includes, we'll call it hand-marked paper ballots or extensive ballot marking devices and tabulation in an open source model, we would commit to performing the work and would agree to a contractual relationship, a contractual relationship to complete this work. It's just we have been receiving resistance on this subject throughout the process.
Okay. So that concludes the video clips. And Trent Lang's gonna be next, but did anyone have any questions on any of the videos or anything? A lot of more time for...
Good job. Do you mind also just before we do it over, explain to everyone, remind who Matt Rowe is, who VotingWorks is, and also what opportunities we have since he wasn't able to join us today, how we might be able to engage him in following this conversation?
Yeah.
Or are we planning to do that later?
Well, I could, well, I was planning to do that.
Okay, sorry.
Well, before he was gonna speak, but it's not gonna be here. I did include a few paragraphs under Letter D, but let me just say verbally that, you know, just obviously VotingWorks was the entity that San Francisco was gonna work with to do the pilot. They're the only entity that has developed an open source voting system that you, that's used in the United States for real elections. And, you know, Matt Rowe has been the representative of VotingWorks and has spoken with, interfaced with the department and the commission. And they are actually based in San Francisco. They have an office, sorry, a facility in the Dog Catch that I've been to. And that, before the pilot, there was an invitation for commissioners to go to their facility and they would show you their system. So they're continuing to work on their system. It's been certified and captured. He was gonna show us one of those pieces of equipment. But since he couldn't be here today, he said he would be willing to do a demo for us at a later date, perhaps in 408 for us, we could go to the facility in the Dog Catch. Let's see it that way. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, sure. Yeah, so next we'll move on to this segment where Trent Lang will be presenting. And I just want to say Trent is a major force in advancing open source voting. I know shortly before he had kind of expressed interest in this topic. I was sort of thinking to myself, you know, we've run out of options. And then Trent came and really injected new life into this campaign. And yes, it's something Trent heard all worked and done. And so Trent has said that he would like for his presentation to be more interactive. You know, what he's speaking himself, but you know, feel free to engage and we'll just learn.
Thank you very much, Chris, for inviting me. And a huge thanks, the reason I'm here and the reason why open source is moving as far as it has, is San Francisco has really been to be the leadership of this Elections Commission along with San Francisco Board of Supervisors. Just crucial to its development. So I'm the Executive Director of California Clean Money Campaign. As you've so often testified, you're a candidate. We have 150,000 supporters across California who care about their elections. We typically have worked on campaign finance before because we're concerned about money politics and issues of political care elections. I had, I'm a PhD in computer science and a former programmer. I knew that open source was a real problem that had to be addressed. Every once in a while, I'd talk to folks like Brent Turner who were leading the issue over the years before that and I figured, well, this shouldn't be, this should be a no-brainer. There should be open source voting systems. It should not, the software should not be secret. I don't even need to do anything else. The Clean Money Campaign doesn't do the thing that is obviously just in San Francisco's got. Unfortunately, San Francisco didn't quite get it, those advanced bits a lot. So, and we became involved in 2018 after we had passed the California Disclose Act. That's the bill that, you see, your TV ads clearly shows the top three funders on a solid black background and the bottom curve of the screen for five seconds. Of course, state can't do that. That only took us seven years to pass through the legislature. Quite a jump. That's why we needed 150,000 supporters to do this. When we looked at that, we looked to revisit, okay, where is open source standing? And it clearly needed some help at that point. Problems had become even more clear and we decided to leap in and help expand the coalition as we could. The fundamental reasons that we and our membership care so much about this issue is the issue of transparency and security. It's just frankly nuts that the software in the voting machines is completely secret. Nobody can see it. Nobody knows what's happened with it. Nobody knows what bugs they have in it. Nobody knows what a security flaw they have in it. And believe me, all the software has bugs and security flaws accidental or mostly accidental. And the way you can open source by letting experts from anywhere be able to look closely at that code and examine that and say, wait, wait, there's a bug there, or there's a security flaw there, wait, this isn't gonna work with this particular version of Unix or this machine. That's crucial. That's why open source is so important. But there have been fundamental statements examined by other outside, by outside experts that have shown the problem. I mean, the top to bottom review of certified voting systems in 2007 by the Secretary of State uncovered serious security flaws with machines at that time, saying, and some of those issues haven't been addressed in 2018. I'm sure some haven't been addressed even now, saying the security mechanisms provided for all systems analyzed were inadequate to ensure accuracy and continuity of the election result. It's our Secretary of State in 2007 with machines that have continued being used for years and years. And then you have the 2017 DEFCON Security Conference and someone passed then where they took a bunch of proprietary voting machines and they let hackers at them. They went in and they were able to mess them up pretty, pretty easy, right? And the summary of that was that every piece of equipment was effectively breached in some manner. The report concluded that it was a national security risk. So these are the sorts of serious issues that we deal with when we have proprietary software that nobody else sees. And one way that we kind of get this across too is that's just assuming that they're just mistakes, accidental mistakes, programming bugs. And I'm not saying that anybody is intentionally hacking voting machines to change bugs. There's been no proof of that anywhere. But I'll give one example. In 2004, when John Kerry was running against George W. Bush, the CEO of then Diebold, before the 2004 election, said, "I am committed to helping Ohio deliver its electoral votes to the president this year." The CEO of the voting machine company that ran the majority of the voting machines in Ohio. And the whole election came down to about, I'd give it like 60,000, 70,000 votes in Ohio that we... Now, did Diebold do something because the CEO made that promise? Nobody knows. Maybe not. Probably not. But you have generations of Democrats in that case that were concerned that maybe they did. There's a lack, a fundamental lack of trust in the election system. And now, as we've all seen, a lot of Donald Trump supporters, so far we haven't seen any merit to it, but they're concerned that the election votes were stolen. And nobody can really prove that they weren't because, again, the software is secret. So these are the fundamental reasons why secret software today is so problematic. Open source voting systems, especially with paper ballots, solve those problems. It's open to anybody to look at and test and point out, say, hey, there's a problem here, there's a problem there. And I haven't done any serious programming in years, but when I did, let me tell you, just as a programmer, I remember that if I knew that other people were gonna be looking at my software, I'd be a hell of a lot more careful with my words than if nobody was. So even just as a fundamental background there. So they're more secure, they give that transparency that people need. So even the orange shenanigans, everybody can see, well, orange shenanigans, look at the source code, where you see the shenanigans. Fixes security issues fundamentally more securely. And then a real benefit is, of course, it's so much lower cost. There are so few private voting machine companies right now and they have every jurisdiction over it. They especially have San Francisco, Paul's River, Barrow, and other counties that use ranked choice voting because you only have one option right now. So estimates that I've seen consistently is that open source voting systems would tend to cost at least half of the normal ones. That's money that counties and elections departments could really use those savings.
Half, I'm sorry. Half? The original outlay or all the maintenance?
Half all the, because, you know, typically Dominion or anybody will, they're charging both for the services, so those services will still be there, but they're also charging for the proprietary software. And that's why they may be using their machines and all that sort of stuff. The software, the open source, is free. That's it, right? So you've still got somebody to, you know, bring your machines in and service them and make sure the software is running and all that stuff. That's where they have to be.
And can I ask, I'm gonna, you asked for interactive...
Yes, please.
So have you been aware of or any of the places where VotingWorks' software is now being used? And how are those jurisdictions tending to those on the open software news?
My understanding, I mean, Mississippi and now New Hampshire has now got it certified. I haven't followed that as closely as I should, but my understanding is basically this case, VotingWorks itself is doing the...
So there probably are still service contracts with VotingWorks over time to maintain that software. That's a survey. So there, VotingWorks is effectively, as far as you know.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And I know it's Matt's not here and we can talk to him later. But they're providing the same kind of package of service and software that the proprietary companies are.
Absolutely.
But the software itself is open source.
Absolutely.
So they're providing the hardware, equipment, machines as well?
I believe so. I believe so. They would, providing a package. But one of the interesting things with open source, so in this particular case, VotingWorks is, as Chris said, the only, just the only place that's developed one in the United States. But it is open source. So theoretically, another sort of, if VotingWorks got taken over by somebody that decided they're gonna jack up the rates a lot, we could have other service companies say, hey, you know, we're gonna use VotingWorks' open source software and we're gonna undercut them and we're gonna get better service at a lower price. They can do that. If you can't do that, you can't take through Dominion machines and ask somebody else to come and service them because that's part of the deal if they're proprietary.
Thank you for your explanations of course, because this is a complex issue that gets a lot of interest in. And I think that's one of the fundamental problems that we can have, just like outside of the nation, outside of the board, in terms of explaining, this may be very superficial. From a marketing standpoint, open source sounds like anybody can come in and change it. When that comes up in a conversation that I might have had casually and they ask me to explain it, I'm like, I don't know, just that, you know? But, but they're, well, wait a minute, how could they be better? And if anybody can come in and look at it, can't they just come in and hack it? Can't they, can't they? And that is a huge...
I agree.
I don't know if you can change the name of it or what.
Oh, that slide has been tossed.
Okay. I mean, and I just haven't been privy to those conversations because this is a very small universe that knows about this.
Yes.
So I really feel we have a challenge. I mean, if everybody had the benefit of sitting here and watching these clips and listening to me, I think, you know, for the most part, a lot of people would be converted. But I really do feel that people, first of all, don't like change.
Right.
And they get scared. And there is a perception of open source, you're gonna come in and change everything. And I think that that's not be fixed.
I'm just trying to make a point of personal privilege. Are either President Konyk or Secretary Davis, have you remained unmuted? A lot of you, just to make sure we're being, our sound is being recorded online and recording.
I'm muted.
You're muted? Are you muted? Not anymore. Okay, great. That's fine. That's just, thank you.
Yeah, I agree. It's kind of got a branding issue for that reason because that is the natural thing. I mean, I felt covered a little bit. We worked in the legislature to try to pass funding to help develop open source. We did actually get something passed through Assembly. But that was the question, every legislator that we talked to, every legislator that we talked to, open source. And then you might just look at it. So it is kind of, it is kind of a branding problem, but that is determined in computer science where open source is really important, not just for voting system, but for all kinds of software. The Department of Defense uses open source for all these transparency reasons. We just, we don't have to convince every single voter of this, I don't think. We have to make sure that there's a voting system that is certified by the Secretary of State. That's your fundamental trust. And that counties use them and that, in this particular case, a county like San Francisco has helped push that development. And we can have those conversations and the answer to the open source is, yes, they can look at it, but they can't change the code. The code lives separately. But now with VotingWorks for their system, you can imagine the Secretary of State having a repository somewhere, there's a repository that regular people don't have permission to edit, they can look at it, but they can't edit it. And another thing I'll just mention in terms of, some people worry about open source, can they look and they find secret ways to get secret things? And maybe, but they don't need that, right? We all have Windows machines or different computers. You do not need a source code to hack computers and mess things up at all. They can have a source code at DEFCON, so you don't need that. And the security that's gained by knowing that the white hats can look at everything virtually and find those holes and lock it, make sure that they lock the attention of people, can change it far, far out of that. That's, but you're right, we have that conversation.
You're a marketing problem. You really do. You can ask, to win this battle, you gotta fix the marketing problem.
I wanna, just one, I disagree. I understand that, I mean, this precise issue has plagued open source for decades. And if it's a marketing problem, it's largely been solved among those who will actually be purchasing the software. Because almost everything you use is also dependent upon open source libraries. So we're all using it inside of proprietary products, alongside of proprietary products. And it's essentially the marketing issue, I think, that the Elections Commission should be focused on is the security issues and the cost. And I'd say we can avoid, I mean, we've identified an issue that the computer world has faced for literally for decades. And we're never gonna solve it. So if we're gonna get stuck behind that boulder, we're never going anywhere. But I think the way to talk about it is this is a type of software that can be inspected by those who weren't involved in selling it to you. And therefore, problems can be found and accuracy can be tested.
Well, that's a solution.
So, you know, you almost avoid the language. I mean, you are right, it is a problem, but it's not one that I think we wanna further solve because it's...
Well, perhaps I was being... Well, perhaps I was being too simplistic by just calling out the name of it.
Yeah.
The fact of the matter is, is it's a complex issue that these two gentlemen boiled down to us because we have the opportunity to sit here for an hour and listen to you. Most people have about a 10-second attention span. And I would just say that your points are very well taken, and that may be the approach that we need to take. But it's got to be boiled down into an elevator speech.
Right, and I agree with that. And in talking to Chris in preparation for this, I mean, I think what I would hope we would be discussing here is which elements, first of all, everyone needs to be suitably comfortable with the distinction between proprietary and open source, and what the benefits might be that could improve. And then our work, I would argue, is how do we work from those benefits to finally get this ball across the goal line that's been, you know, sorry, the metaphor's going to fall apart here, I'm not a healthy person, you know, that was teed up, what, two decades ago at this point?
And there's a question I have as to why it's not moving, we have all this political support.
Right, I mean, that is, why it's so stuck is really a good question. I agree.
So probably, if you don't mind me jumping ahead, I should really appreciate this dialogue. I have two things I wanted to add. I imagine you had more to say.
That's okay, but these questions are great.
This is more a comment, which is kind of tangential in the context of narrative and public narrative. Because I think there's a fair point of who do we actually need to influence? And it's not necessarily influencing the average voter. It's influencing the Secretary of State and also getting our department of elections on board to support a pilot program. But I will say one thing that could cause a barrier with the average voter and the public that I react to is the sentiment around the integrity of the 2020 election and the questioning of the results. And I think that it is also our job as a commission to ensure that the public trusts our department. And I think we need to be very careful about questioning those types of things. I completely support the need for open source and moving away from proprietary. But I want to be very clear that it's not because we don't trust the results of our elections. And also, there were several recounts that were conducted as a result of the contested, the contest, rejection of the results, rather. So I just, I want to make sure, making that very clear, of not that we do trust our election results. They are trusted, they have integrity. We do believe, as I believe as commissioner myself, I don't want to speak for anyone else, that there is opportunity to make it more transparent so that we can be more trusted. But I wanted to just lay that out for everyone, because I do believe that there is a marketing component to that, and we don't want to undermine our current system while we work to be a better one.
And I would completely agree with that. California campaign certainly doesn't question the integrity of the last election, or even that 2004 election in Ohio. But there are trust issues, and they are magnified greatly by the lack of transparency. And that's one of the things that open source can do. In addition to really better resolve a lot of the true security issues that they actually have done, even if they haven't led to. One last point, we always have paper, open source paper ballot voting systems. Always make sure there's a printed paper ballot, because that's another way people can trust in the degree counts, etc.
Fair way to say it, for those who have questions after elections, that had they been open source, it would be easier to improve.
Yes, exactly, yes, exactly.
Yeah, and building on that, I think actually this conversation may, some of the prevails of the 2020 election may actually be helpful because we will now have, we now do have data on how expensive it is to repeatedly audit proprietary systems. And once the Mississippi legislature, you know, once there are some experiences using open source software, should it, those have to be audited, and they have to be audited in a normal process. Because there, I think, they're going to be significant.
I just had one thing to say, like, this, not that this affected any results, but even San Francisco, there were two cases where in terms of the public brought information about vulnerabilities in the Dominion voting system to us. So we, you know, that's something that actually affected us. And when they got fixed, you think that if they had been open source, there's a very high probability that those would have been bought for open source.
So that's the question I have for this strategic conversation. It's practically speaking, what that looks like. If you could see, and I know there are other comments that you want to make, and we're degrading you.
No, not at all.
But just in practice, what does that actually look like in terms of people having the ability to audit as the party experts? Is that the term we use?
Right. It's a question, how would that actually be done, with open source?
In practice, right. So let's say San Francisco, we form with open source, we now have open source, the whole package. The sheer fact that it exists does, sure, it can help build some additional awareness and trust. But in the actual benefit of being able to offer those experts access to the source code, can you talk about what that looks like in practice?
Sure, sure.
Does it affect the.
Yes, no, it doesn't.
Thank you.
So, once, you know, all of Voting Works code is open source, there are repositories that anybody can go on and take a look at. When, obviously, beyond a pilot program, there isn't going to be any jurisdiction using them until they're certified by the Secretary of State. And the whole deal with certification is no vendor can make changes to the software that are going to be used unless it's kind of recertified. There's arguments for legislation to make that easier, to do incremental recertification after things have been put out in open source. But the basic idea is somewhere there will be the repository, like now, it may be, Voting Works continued to hold that repository. There has been some discussion at the state level and at Secretary of State, that maybe the Secretary of State should be the repository of any open source voting system. And hopefully, eventually, it'll be not just Voting Works, but we're going, I think. And I'm sure at some point, there will be others and ones that are modified off that, etc. So there will be a repository right now that's at Voting Works, that they set up for their software. Anybody can go and look at that software. And then right now, they would give feedback to Voting Works and say, hey, I found a bug here, can you fix it? It hasn't been certified yet, Voting Works can look at that and say, that's a stupid comment, that's not right. No, it works anyway. Voting Works is like, oh, thanks, let's fix that, right? And then when it's certified, then, you know, maybe a while, continues to be Voting Works, maybe there becomes a repository of Secretary of State. But either way, it can't be changed, it will be public, so anybody can look at it if they want to. And software can't be changed for jurisdictions to do unless it's recertified. Did I answer your question?
Yes. This is actually precisely the kind of thing that a good graphic would go a very long way.
Yes, absolutely.
For people who have never looked at software code, who know the repository. I'm not saying that's your job, Trent.
Yeah, no, I can write it down, you're right.
Matt Rose, yeah?
Yes.
But explaining what it means that everybody can get their hands on it, I'd agree with Nancy, that's not actually necessarily a confidence boosting description. But a good graphic.
Everybody, that is a better, everybody can look at it, but not everybody can change it.
Right.
Only the holder of the repository and the certification can change it.
Yeah. But beyond just the marketing or whatever we want to call it, there seems to be a lot of political support for this, but no political will.
Yes, okay, so that's a complex question, maybe I'll talk about the second part, which is what's been happening a little bit.
And I know the pandemic has played a role.
I mean, there's been certain political will and certainly not political will. The fundamental problem, the biggest fundamental problem is to develop a new open source voting system costs a lot of money, right? The estimates were, you know, between $8 million and $20-plus million. I think the higher ones aren't really true, but those were those estimates certainly cost millions and millions of dollars. So California campaign got involved, when we got involved in 2018, we saw our role as best trying to get the money allocated. At that time, since there were no open source systems, having Voting Works started at that point, we didn't. Was to try to get funding for, in that case, San Francisco to actually develop this, because there had long been discussions, as you heard, about having San Francisco actually develop with those potential $8, $10 million, that's $1 million plus cost. So what we did is we, a commission and a coalition of people who had been involved before, like Calvo and others, and then a lot of coalitions for our few components, efforts to do two things. One, we were trying to get state matching funds for that. We had, we did a couple of budget requests, but the most, one of the first was AD 1784, the Secure the Road Act in 2019. It was authored by someone who was Miguel Santiago, the Chu when he was still in the Senate number, William Gonzalez. Senator Scott Wilk was a principal co-author. We already had $16 million of matching funds from the state that $8 million could have been used by a county with matching funds to develop. We were moving that forward at the same time as we were working with the Board of Supervisors in 2018. And we saw those hearings that, which Chair Leah Cohen at that time held. And with a very large community outcry, and there really were thousands of emails coming into these supervisors saying, we need San Francisco to allocate some money. San Francisco, at the Board of Supervisors, then did allocate $1.3 million, signed off by the new mayor, Juan Green, and passed unanimously by those supervisors. So that did get the ball rolling, but $1.3 million isn't, is it $16 million? Unfortunately, so a lot of it is a money, really is a money problem. The bill got all the way through the Assembly, passed, and a bipartisan vote, we were actually, 62 vote through the Assembly, but then it kind of got derailed by the pandemic. San Francisco, the Department of Technology started working on it, with the $1.3 million, which of course wasn't nearly enough to get very far. We weren't completely thrilled with the progress the Department of Technology was making at that time, seemed a little bit slow. We had asked for, I think there could be a Republican to put into that process, and that's the company. But then the pandemic then took the little remaining shreds of that money away also. So there's really a big money problem there. There is a bureaucratic problem at the Secretary of State, as Chris's testimony showed. They were supposed to have created regulations for pilot programs back in 2013, and SB 360 was passed, and they never did. So when the good news happened, it was thrilling, that Voting Works, a nonprofit based here in San Francisco, had actually gone through and developed an open source voting system. That was really thrilling because that meant we didn't have to thank San Francisco to come up with the money, or the state to come up with the money. And, you know, government projects aren't always the best anyways, even if you get the money. That was thrilling, that's where the pilot program came up, but then we were kind of hit with a little roadblock with regulations not being implemented. So disappointment was that despite all the community support, the support from the Board of Supervisors, that pilot did not happen during the election. The good news was that all of that attention and President Walton's official request to the Secretary of State to create the regulations and everything else, they did find to get those regulations done, but that didn't do it. So it's kind of a money problem and a bit of a bureaucratic problem. I would say there are probably some, that some have raised the surface, like some staffers in different places, you know, changes, I would say, changes hard. And when you're used to your current vendors, this idea of going to open source, which has a funny name, sometimes has push-ups.
Couple of questions. For the $16 million matching funds that were offered, is that for elections to develop their own? Or what was the role of being able to use a partner or vendor such as Voting Works? And I guess part two of that question also comes to what was the intent behind having the one plan, what was it, 1.2?
More quickly, I know there is a little change also.
The one, you know, one plus million dollars, the suits allocated, what was the intent behind that going to the Department of Technology? So you may see why those questions go together.
Yes, yes.
So you could see each other.
Yeah, great, great questions. The, the idea for the state funding, and this is how we got as broad support as we had, is that it was, it had to be for a general public license, open source voting system. So whatever way we successfully convinced the Assembly to pass it was to say, hey, whatever county develops it, and it probably would be San Francisco, will make it open source so every other county will be able to take advantage of that and use it themselves. That's the great, great thing. San Francisco was going to take the lead, and then Los Angeles County also built the open system. They claim they were going to make it open source. By law, SB 1360, they were supposed to, 360, they were supposed to disclose sources. They still haven't. We fought them for a while on that, and we've temporarily given up on that fight because they're probably just never going to do it, which is why we need a company to do it. So if San Francisco did it, then everybody's out on campus, the country would be able to do it. That was one of the things that got all of our supporters statewide excited and got legislators on board. I don't know if the Department of Technology was necessarily the best choice for it. There was a debate, I understand, that maybe the Department of Elections should have had control of that contract because it's going to be used by you. And I understand the Department of Elections didn't necessarily want to have control of that, planning and experience, so there are lots of issues there. So all that money was used, we would say, was not used ideally and belatedly. And that was part of the reason why we became so excited that Voting Works solved the issue.
So Voting Works came into the picture after that money had been.
After that money had been used and taken away, and AD 1784 got delayed, so.
Should I, should I start using some of the rules?
Maybe I should start facilitating.
Yeah, why do you facilitate?
Because I also, I think it's really important for us to get to this end, this session to, but let's do.
So we could see that Armin did as well, so just want to make sure you can see, so all three of them, I don't know who was first.
Well, one's a serious question. Mine is a, mine is a, it's a difficult one, so, mine's not a strategy question. I don't know if you know the answer to this question, but following in the wake of 2020, several states have passed laws against the use of philanthropic contributions to elections. Do you have any idea if the way, and I don't know if that's happening in California, I don't think so. It has not, again. Is Voting Works nonprofit status potentially a complicating factor in places where that regulation is in place? Because it was launched with philanthropic status. Do you know this is coming up?
I can't really speak to that, but my gut is no. They're essentially providing or selling a service to counties, or just like any other vendor.
So you haven't heard of anyone trying to go after, or Chris, have you heard of any? I'm just, there is, I would argue, not that I would ever pursue this, but that if you were, well, forget what I would argue. Do you have any idea of Voting Works is based on? is based on?
Not that I've heard. I mean, I know normally you have to pay Voting Works to.
Right, they definitely are providing a service for sale in a commercial way, but because they're structured as a nonprofit, their original investment capital to develop this software was for a profit. Now, maybe because it's already, because it happened before the laws were passed, I'm just, I raise it, not because I think that's likely to become the case in California, but I could see that becoming a real impediment for Voting Works if somebody wanted to go down that route.
Yeah, I mean, it would be a question, yes, also, but then in that case, maybe you can form a further revenue.
Exactly, as they could, it just is.
That's been made, so it's probably the elections commission as well. You know, it's a lot of.
Well, then someone else beside them would have to be responsible for their product. So I'm saying, if someone's going to go after elections through this philanthropic loophole thing, they, there's an argument that they can make, that they use that software as entirely a nonprofit. I don't want to.
I don't, I don't.
I just wanted to know.
It's an interesting, it's an interesting issue, I haven't heard much about it, but I don't think it's going to be an issue in California.
Yeah, I think it won't be, it won't be a.
Yeah, and I just wanted to ask, only if this is a short answer.
Sure.
What happened with LA, if they got state money or they required them to get open source, how do they have the rights and not?
They just have not followed the law, the Secretary of State has not made them follow the law.
Who's there? Who's saying?
They have, they have, their director has made various, oh, we can't release the software because then people will see it and then we can't.
What's that whole point?
Yes, and it wasn't, they're not even required to make it open source, they're required by the law to make it disclosed source, so that, you know, so that people could see it. It's been very, very frustrating. I think they would lose a lawsuit, but California campaign doesn't have the resources to fight the California law, so, so they kind of skated by on that. It's been very frustrating.
Okay, so do you mind, do you mind if we start the strategy session first?
Mine, mine was a question about the strategy.
Do you want to say something? Oh, no, I was going to say, let's look, Chris, introduce the strategy session, then you'll be first as a part of it. Is that what you wanted to do?
Sure, sure. So we've got about forty minutes left, is that ready for the, and, you know, as Supervisor Stephanie said at the conclusion of one of those hearings, you know, how can we carry this over to finish now? And I want to, I wanted to mention a few pieces of background information going into this discussion, because there's sort of an elephant in the ring that the director has already said he's going to issue an RFP next spring for a new voting system, and it's not going to be an open source voting system because Voting Works is not, they're not certified, so they wouldn't be able to bid on the RFP. So that's one issue, you know, what's going to happen with the RFP. There's another issue that the, the A C, a couple years ago, they upgraded their voting system standards. This is like a, something happens every ten years. And now California is supposed to be ahead of the federal standards. So now, now because the federal government upgraded their standards, the Secretary of State has now started a process to upgrade their standards. And that could take, maybe take a year or two in our leadership. So, so in California, we're, we're on the precipice of having upgraded standards. And then the, the final thing I want to mention is that when, when the department signed this contract back in 2007 for a voting system, the original contract was for six years, it was a four years and then two one year options to extend. But then in subsequent years, the board extended that contract, they voted to extend it three more years beyond the original five, and then they extended it two more years beyond that, so they used that system for eleven years. And when we were at the warehouse today, I asked, how's the equipment looking? They said it's fine, it operates well. So I think one option could be, can the department extend its current contract for a couple years? Number one, we could wait for their open source system to develop, be developed, or be certified. And number two, we could also wait for California to upgrade its standards, because why, why would we go into a new voting system using an old security standards? So I want to, I want to put that option on the table, it's not something that we've talked about yet, it's not something that we discussed with Director Harns. Obviously, the department has extended contracts in the past, but I, I think we should talk about, you know, what do we want to do about the RFPs, or you want to have some kind of position on that, or at least discuss it. And number two is, you know, what, are we going to try for another pilot at some point?
Just to clarify, first of those final people, you're suggesting a strategy of having the department just keep extending the existing rather than sign a new contract because the potential to then switch to an open source, I just want to make sure I follow that.
Yeah, and because there's a, there's a cost to switching systems. You've got to swap everything out, retrain people, and, and then, and then we're going to be behind the curve with the security.
Well, and also, just to make sure I understood, if we have the RFP in the spring, there's a risk that the, the people who bid will not be compliant with the new standards, so if the Secretary of State doesn't believe it, is that what I mean?
Well, they almost certainly won't because they don't know what they are.
Right, so in other words, we might get locked into another six, eleven year contract with old security standards. So it seems like a bureaucratic.
And one of, one of the things too is back in 2019, when the department signed a contract for a current system, we were thinking that the open source system would build in three years, so that's why it was only a four year contract, which went out. So even back then, we were sort of comparing for having some kind of, which, which never So, so yeah, and then all, there's a spreadsheet here, you can see how much we're paying for our contracts going back to 2007. The average is out to about two million dollars. So, so.
I, I, it just really comes down to, I mean, you were the one who said it, okay? We got it passed by the assembly, we had, what, sixteen, did you say?
Sixteen as well. Sixteen as well.
Right. And if you don't have that, it's hard to develop a system, is the main thing.
Well, the difference is we don't need to.
We no longer need to.
We don't need to develop it.
We no longer need to.
Because Voting Works has a system.
So we have, we are out of the business of asking the counties to develop anything because the system has been developed. It just, it does need to be certified by California, and a pilot program would probably help that.
So how, how can you move, move that ball to the goalposts? How, the roadblock being the Secretary of State, am I, or couldn't we get political support to push that? I mean, because it seems like that's who they listen to.
Well, I, I'll just, I'll say it, I don't think the Secretary of State is the only competitor.
No, I don't either.
Closer to home, there are.
But maybe we need to identify them, and what kind of pressure can be brought to bear on the, the obstacles in the way, and I don't think, I'm just going to be, I don't, I think it's nice to have the elections commission put it out there that this is what we want to happen, but it matters a lot more when the board of supervisors is saying that, it matters a whole lot more when the assembly and the state senate members are saying. That's what we need.
May I jump in? So just to, like, here, clarify a few things, and Chris, if you can just correct me, I just want to re-urgitate a couple of points and make sure we're all kind of talking in the same language. So my understanding of what you are saying is that California is supposed, the federal standards are, voting system standards are being updated as we speak. California will have to be ahead of those federal standards, and therefore the Secretary of State is now working as well to update those standards. So we are up to, we are on the, we won't have the roadblock of the standard, the regulatory issues that we faced in the past. We also already have the ability to open source voting system available to us, so the development of a system isn't necessary anymore. The conversation that you want to have is now we're in a different position than we had at a point before, because we have the system, we'll have the regulatory standards, what we need is the will, to use your language, to when, at the right moment, strategically position the department to, and ourselves, to ensure that when the contract comes up, we are timing it so that we could potentially allow the open source vendor to compete, to put in a bid. Is that where we're at? Would you say that's a fair, but helpful?
Yeah, I think there's an additional piece where, I think Voting Works has limited time and resources, they're only going to work on features if they have possible resources. And if they don't see any interest from San Francisco, they're not going to, so I think there needs to be some kind of a interest shown from San Francisco, because if they don't think they have a chance of winning a contract, they don't, they're not going to.
So I wanted to, if you don't mind, do you mind, just because I actually, there's one other piece I wanted to add to that, which I think is relevant to this strategic conversation, which is, since I got the like initial part where the biggest, one of the biggest points that has come up about S F's inability to get their, for many agencies, but one that comes up the most frequently is range choice voting, and that Voting Works at this point doesn't have that functionality with their system. So it's kind of been this chicken and egg problem from my perspective, they have limited time and resources, and therefore are going to work with jurisdictions that are showing vested interest, but we might have vested interest, but also don't have the general support that we need because we can't say that they have everything that they, that the system that we would want to potentially use has everything we would need to. So it's a chicken and egg problem, whoever's fault it, whose fault it is, where we're at is kind of a part of it. I think that needs to be a conversation that we have today, is the range choice and how, how would you, and I did put Mr. Dye off, so if you don't mind, that's okay.
Yeah, and there's one step in between, which is Voting Works will have to be certified under the standards that the Secretary of State actually puts out. So if it takes the Secretary of State a year to put out the standards, I'd take more time for a new system to be certified under those standards, so.
Well, the, so like for Voting Works example, they're, they're certifying to the federal, they use federal standards, and then the California standards are probably going to be a slave creation, and so there's a good chance that whatever they're working on.
Maybe they could get there, but they still need to jump through that.
Yeah, but, so this is kind of why I'm saying, I think that one strategy could be, let's, let's, you know, get the director on the same page, let's, let's extend the current contract for a couple years instead of investing all this money and switching to something else.
And do not need the four standards to come out.
Yeah, and.
To me, that is like the most basic question, and you can take open source out of it, why would we want to lock ourselves into another six year contract with old standards?
If, if we buy ourselves a couple years, we'll have more time to figure out, you know, in terms of voting, and how do we get these groups talking more and more. You know, our policy parties that we adopted a few months ago, one of them is for the department to issue a call out saying, hey, you know, are there any organizations that would be willing to develop range choice voting and what you need? Just, I, just that, that sort of gets the ball rolling.
My, um, I would just say that we, we want to bring direct knowledge into this same chain, and I don't know if procedures, but if President Stone has that conversation with us, however we proceed, but I do think it makes sense that whatever we do, we send a letter to all the numbers who are suppressed as to what we do, because I think it's really important to have them on the same page. Otherwise, he's going to go in front of them with a contract, we need to explain why we don't think we need that that's viable, and we need to do it sooner rather than later. Don't wait, but we have to work with John.
Hi, hi, actually. If you don't mind, I was gonna, maybe back in the, I think it's a great idea. I also think what we should actually do is put together a robust, like an actual report that we provide them with the history, with like the full context, a package that they can read, basically compiling all of this, where we are, and so it gives them really, first of all, it creates a more, a really cohesive, comprehensive record with the commission's name on it, saying here's, you know, what, fifteen years of history and effort and progress, and then be able to provide, here's the policy solution that we have, here's how we want to approach it, and we want your support. And of course, we would want to tell them that we're doing this before we just say, here's a letter for you, but I think a full robust report with a letter explaining what we want to do ahead of the decision around the RFP is probably, is probably, really would support that. I think it would be an enormous amount of work to put that together, but I do think it would benefit, it would lead to the result that you see.
Chris is already done. I mean, you, you just have to kind of put it into a binder all day.
Well, but I think highlighting what's different about this moment and why this strategy is also quite important.
When you can, I do that.
We've sent letters to the board, even since I've been on the show.
I should say, it needs to go to the mayor, and I also think the board goes to any of the, God call, all their aides, or them personally, and tell them it's coming and why. Always have that personal conversation, always. That's how you build relationships and trust.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, I don't know that we need to do a comprehensive report, because the board has been incidentally involved, and I mean, we're quoting themselves back to them.
Well, I'm right.
But there are certainly differences.
Sure.
But, I mean, I think, as other commissioners have pointed out, Chris, you put a lot of key pieces together, what is important to me is a relatively succinct, you know, more than two page letter that explains what's different, you know, and why now.
Why now?
And it doesn't have to be long, and then say, this is the why now part, that's the part that needs to be crafted, and here's the history, and you guys were an intimate part of it, so, you know, that we've kind of been living along for what, seventeen years now, and now we're at this clutch, where our standards are changing, where we actually have developed systems, we have, and are potentially still working with us to add the range choice voting piece, but it makes no sense to put out an RFP, lock ourselves into another proprietary system, worse, with old standards. I mean, I actually think that's really the key point, like you could totally not even mention open source, and just talk about the timing of this contract.
I think that's right, although I don't think you'd be locking yourself into a system that met old standards because they do require you to update that, but I do think the rest of it.
Yeah, I just got to say, I mean, I think you guys are right on the, on the ball on this, I think it would be valuable for that statement to include, because we do want the option of being able to use an open source system, wants one to certify, and.
We're close.
We're, we've never been closer.
Yeah.
And the city doesn't have to develop it, we just have to make sure we don't lock ourselves into a, a tender contract.
There was a barriers before, they've been removed.
Yeah, so, so I think, I'm not sure if you didn't probably, you might have mentioned this, but I think it would be worth having the conversation with Director Harns, I don't know what's going to.
Oh, yeah, I got you.
Because, because the thing is, you know, he might think, oh, that's a great idea, I'm not going to have, it's going to save me some work, I mean, let's, totally, he's like, maybe, maybe he'll say, I was, I was worried that you wouldn't be okay with this, you know, so it's like, because if he's, if he likes the idea, then we don't have to worry about it.
Point of clarification, you're saying, to make sure I understand, we're getting in a conversation with the director, you're saying about the four year contract extension or about our plans to advocate it to the board?
For the conversation about Director Harns, what do you think about extending the current contract instead of issuing a. current contract instead of issuing a new one?
Yeah, so does.
Okay. Or, or is that one of your reasons? I agree with this.
Well, and it's just sort of like, why don't you have that conversation too, like, uh, I'm trying to get that.
I think President Stone should have it, because she has that relationship with Director Ernst, and I think we absolutely, that's always a first thing we need to do, that would respect for him, his position, and I think that he could totally be in the middle of this, we don't know how, but we're smart. Even if he's 100% behind it, this commission needs to build relationships with the board of supervisors and the mayor, we need to build credibility, we need to build trust. A two-page letter saying what we're recommending, I think is important. Chris, you've done an amazing job here, and I mean, if all they got were these clips, I'd like to want to go home and look at them again. You're amazing, you're fantastic. As a backdrop, with a two-page letter, I mean, you've done a great job.
I do think that backdrop is important. I think the two-page letter is great, but I think, I know I interrupted you when I said that, so.
No, I'm not.
No, but I think context matters, history matters, and the board of supervisors change. You know, yes, we do have some people who never seem to want to leave city government, however, I do think that it's important to show the long history here, which you've already done.
It's here, it's in these clips.
I guess my point is, we'll have an introductory letter and then a robust incorporation of all the work that's already done.
Can I ask you something? I want to, I may be backing us up and taking us away, then we can pull this, but I have a question about this strategy from the history, which is, that was the first time I knew about Sequoia conversation and the idea that they would, the proprietary vendor to make a public statement, agreeing to do something that they then wound up not having continued. Is there anything in that experience for us to learn now? Is my question, and I don't think I know enough about contract.
Yeah, my ask a point of clarifying question is to make sure we're all on the same page, so, just so I understand correctly, because I was going to ask about this as well, so Sequoia was obligated to report, just basically report if there was another competitor that came to market, that's it, that came to market offering the Zephyr.
No, no, they, I thought it was more than that, they were obligated to make their shop or.
They star operate.
Yeah.
No, the, the commission was if during their, during the contract, the vendor, another vendor that was open source got certified in California.
Got certified.
Then Sequoia would have to make first open source.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Which you gave.
No, but that wasn't open source.
No. Right, because actually companies changed, and they never had to do it because no open source. But I'm curious about the strategy that was at play to get them to do that, and just reflecting on whether there's anything of value now for us. Maybe not, because so much has changed, but, and nobody feels comfortable not to look at history, and we're not going to answer.
Is that, is that complex still, the advice? I mean, in that, back then, you could see the, the board acting was very strong.
Yes, yeah.
They were, if we had a board like that, you could, they could do that, maybe, I don't know if, it depends on who's on the bottom, who's on the board.
Well, I would say that, you know, the pandemic has just thrown everything into it. I mean, every, so I don't know if the board is, we're just trying, we're trying to see that.
The other thing I would add, which is why I asked the clarifying question, is that that is specifically working, asking a private company to do something as opposed to us being in control of the RFP process and which vendor, us meaning like the city or the Department of Elections, getting to have, go through a full competitive process versus like pressure in Sequoia to do their own open because of others, but I think it's always hard to try and force to hold them accountable to something that might be something marked in-house.
It's related, it's not strategy, but it's a question, given that Voting Works now is in New Hampshire and this is city, that they're working to be ready to do these federal regulations, that it will be updated and such, what does that do to the voting system field as a whole? Is that all of a sudden, is that, what is the trend, like is there, are, do we know what they were all talking about, also like, okay, well, the ship is sailing, like we need to also get on board with this because this is the new thing, or are they like, no, we still want to make money in this way, so they're not incentivized to go to open source because maybe there's a lower pocket margin? Like what, do we know what the trends are, like it's few voting.
I think you can say for, for certain that it's not having any effect right now. It's going to be a while before.
Mood to change.
So, sorry, I realize I'm skinny quite a bit, and I'm just conscious of time, there's something I really want to make sure that we come back to. So I think it seems like we're all in somewhat of a general alignment about the contract idea, how to handle it with John and the board of supervisors, which I think we need to bring as a full commission and a regular meeting to vote on, since I have not agendized this as an action, this is only discussion. But the second piece that I want to mention, which I know you had said, like, contract first, then later we'll deal with the range choice voting question, I would strongly encourage us to not push that too far down the road. I think that needs to be like a two-pronged concurrent strategy, because that continues to be a problem and continues to be a friction between Matt Rowe of Voting Works and John Ernst, Director of Elections.
Is there also, I mean, I know that the RCB was one thing, are there other issues? Do I recall like Chinese characters who have been the open source, is that an issue also? Were there other issues?
Yeah, like maybe having two lines simultaneously, but maybe, maybe you want to put it for me, and I don't know if you're saying you want to wait until after the January, or this, before the January, but just like, maybe with Director Ernst, and then say, how do you feel about this idea of extending the contract, and then in the same meeting, say, are you, do you have a time frame for when you can give this announcement now, asking, you know, our policy proposals, or giving a call-out to ask what people would need in terms of this. Because I think it's more like Director Ernst is the one that's going to be, so I think it's worth us finding out where this trends are.
I think I'm misunderstanding what I'm saying, so what are you saying, what are you envisioning or proposing, John is announcing your name?
Uh, this is.
That he's extending the contract and.
Oh, no.
I didn't have the opportunity to sort these things.
The, the.
Oh, oh, you mean in terms of the tie with, or the demo.
Asking them what people need.
Because we're talking about two different things here, like one is what we're going to do about the contract, and then the second is about the policy priority, so are you talking specifically about the policy priority?
Yeah, well, if the policy priority would address range choice voting, if, if he, if he puts out a, does the outreach to find out what people would need to evolve the range choice voting, that's the way we can progress in that.
I hear you.
And then simultaneously, there's this contract deal in spring. So I think, I mean, we want to have this as a public discussion, it's probably better if it can be discussed in private.
I, I, in the interest of time, would, I suggest that because we can't take action today, perhaps we draft a proposal for this, I think just a proposal, that the commission can review and vote on the next, or take action on, because we have that commission meeting with what we discussed, with what we discussed today, since it's still public meeting.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's not, it's really just to, okay, yeah, I mean, true.
The only reason I say that, and you don't have to draft it, but the only reason is that you can't take action today.
Well, I mean, it's not, it's not something that, but anyone can talk to Director Ernst, but I know like at the last meeting I asked publicly, did he have any thought about our policy proposals, and he said, I haven't thought about it. Can you tell us at the next meeting? So it's like, we just want to know where it stands, it's not like we need to.
I think where I'm coming from is if we're going to make a decision for me to go to the director and share that this is what we want, or, or rather propose the extension of the contract rather than opening RFP, and in tandem, asking him to, like I think the policy priority, fine, maybe we don't need to take action on that, because we already have. But if it's going to be in the same conversation where I'm also talking about the RFP, I, I feel I personally don't believe I should do that without the commission's consent of vote. But I'm hoping, I'm one commissioner, so I'm hoping to hear what everyone else says.
Like one option would be, you could just say this is something that the commission discussed, we didn't make any decisions on it, but.
Yeah, still not.
It's not, because we haven't made a performance.
Well, I wonder if it's, you know, if it is just recapping some of this conversation, is we were thinking about this because, you know, it's the, it's the whole SODA, you know, we're suggesting delaying or extending the contract for a limited period of time SODA, and that is the conversation, is that we're trying to figure out how to solve this thing, right? For almost two decades, we've had this priority of open source, we have established a policy priority for our commission on open source, on open source voting, and so we're just figuring out how to get there, this was an idea that came up, just want to talk to you about it and see where you are. So the SODA is very established, but there's also the SODA with timing that was discussed here that really matters, and so that feels okay, and I also tend to lean towards what you said, that if there is a vote that needs to happen, like we're saying, John, Director Ernst, we, we want you to extend, you know, extend a year and not do a new RFP, that I think we probably should vote on, but giving like the, we're talking about the SODA part, can we just talk about that and just see where you are? That feels okay to me. I agree. I, I feel like we're just filling them out, right? Because me, if I were John, I would look at this and say, oh my gosh, I'm saving so much work, you know, and I don't have to put out a new RFP, I'm working with a trusted vendor, so I did work with him for eleven years, and it's so much easier just to extend the contract and simultaneously solve some policy priority for the elections commission, you know, this, this seems like it's easy, right? And so, you know, it might be a big reveal, like Chris said, I mean, I need totally new information with that, it would be necessary to, to say the vote is pleased that you did it, and we're just saying, we're going to delay the RFP for another year or two years, and even have a word, you know, that would be great to get his input on, and because of the timing of the election standards that are being updated right now, the timing for an RFP, that would seem to be that great. You know, you get, get a seat back on, and you're just saying, this is a good discussion that we had, and we want to get your ideas on it, because I, you know, again, I'm putting myself in issues, and this, that, this is.
I also think, you know, maybe that sort of inquiry footage is important, because we don't know what he's already done, he may have already developed RFP, you know, he may have some, some time into this, and there are enough variables in this timeline going forward that are, some of which are in John's control, RFP, some of which are out of John's control, certification, that it can't help but help if for us to better understand that rhythm of time, that series of events, always.
So I'm just taking everyone's feedback, listening, I think the only other thing I want to add though is that, you know, the commission can't necessarily tell John what to do about contract decisions, so we do have to take that into consideration, and I think especially if we're going to write a letter to the board of supervisors, we need to keep that in mind. So I'm happy to approach the conversation with John as a, a discussion, a discovery, but I'm not going to, I'd be very careful about not going any blind, but if it falls outside of lines, and, and I can come back, come back to the commission with what I hear as well.
And if you do that, I mean, is it something that you could discuss at our next meeting in December?
If I, if I, sorry, if I do that meeting, have that conversation, and you ask me, can I have the opportunity to go to December meeting? There is one caveat to that that you all don't know, which is that John won't be at our December meeting, so that is a little French, but I'm happy to talk to you offline a little bit more, and make sure, also make sure that I'm very prepared for that conversation as well.
I would just say, maybe I should have, I, I like the suggestion the commission would make about having that conversation, but I would also say, and I know we don't have control over this contract, but we do have control over our communication to the board of supervisors, and, you know, we have that kind of conversation, but then we can take a vote, and we can send, we can, we can send a letter to the board of supervisors in there, and they, and, because the thing is, is that they get these, these, you know, proposals in front of them, and it's just one person saying this, oh, it sounds good, okay, but we actually have a position, no? And I think that, you know, at some point, sooner rather than later, I think transparency is key, respect for the person who's running with the department is very important, and we follow the protocol, but we as a commission have the right to have a position that we can share with the electors.
Okay, I think we're all, we were all on the same page, so the course of action is have the conversation with John, see what happens about what we talked about, and then either way, the commission and Gates also depending on, you know, use the insight that we get from John, take, take action on communicating our position to the electors. We'll take a vote, we take action. Are, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, just a, just one question, clarification, like if, if Director Ernst turns out to be totally liking the idea of extending the contract, would we still want to take that form of action?
I think that we should, I think that we should, I mean, I also think we have to be honest with ourselves, that President John, he'll, he'll not be on the commission for that long, so we do need to be thoughtful of his participation, making sure that we can take all of his knowledge while we can, not that we're pushing it up the door, we just want to make sure we, we get everything before the vote.
Director Ernst, I'm starting.
Yeah, so, I lost my train of thought, what we were just talking about.
I told you.
You said, oh, I think that either way, we should take it, we should make a, take a vote. I don't know if that's going to be next month or January, but I think either way, we should take a vote, so that we can get your work, that's why you got, get your work out there as quickly as possible, and it's kind of, you know, turn points, with respect for John, let's have a conversation, get his feedback, hope that he's on board, but either way, we can still have a position that we present publicly. The only consideration that I will just add, and we can talk about this when we do take action, is I personally feel very strongly that we don't have controversy on this body next year, and so if John strongly disagrees with this approach, I think we need to be very, have a very honest conversation with each other of whether 2024 is the right, I think we need to be honest about what potential we have, so I'm just going to say that upfront as a consideration, I don't think we might have a war again next year, so hopefully it doesn't come to that, but we just, priorities need to be on the election. Is there anything else, Chris?
Yeah.
Sure. I would have your hands up.
I listen with, I have to excuse myself. Yeah. I, I'm just going to say, with the caveat that this is a vote, it's very, it's very 2024, so, so we have to do it subsequently.
We do, we absolutely do.
Yeah, I think the only, the only response I have to have is it would just influence my decision-making about how I can stay in this conversation, I'm just wanting to flesh it out.
Yeah, that's all.
Though. Though, so, totally fine, Commissioner Burrows, we do have further, we do still have to take general public comment. Did you say you have to leave as well?
I would have to leave very soon, but obviously.
Okay, I do have, so, there.
Just one kind of, like, I, before we read the comment, I just really appreciate, like, all the work that you've done, Chris. Like, all of this is better, I know that you made time, probably for everybody in here, and you made time to help me understand this issue. And I really appreciate that along with all of these materials, so I'm sure it was a lot to appreciate.
Thank you, Chris. And thank you, Tom.
You're welcome, thank you very much, again, for doing the, a leader in all of this, and we're almost there.
Listen to the words, I'm trying to hear comments.
But thank you all.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the meeting was scheduled for four o'clock, so. Yeah, of course, yeah, I'm, we're on schedule, I just. Or you take this round, and we can have some, um, if we can't do that, I guess I'll just postpone it. Is there anything else, anything else, okay, let's move to, let's move to public comment. Is there anyone in person that would like to take a moment? Yes, just give me one moment to sort of time that.
I'd like to set my timer, you know, so I know where I am.
Okay, well.
Ellen Buradel here. I really only came for the jeopardy, I stayed for this comment. And a lot of what you said went right over my head, okay, because I'm not so familiar with this comment. But I just want to mention a few things that resonated with me. And I'm still going to be critical right now of this commission, okay, and that's not always easy. But Commissioner Stone, during this discussion, said, and this is almost a quote, "We don't want to be viewed as undermining public trust in elections by getting behind open source." And I think that's a good thing to be concerned about. That's a good concern, Pat. But this commission didn't have the same concern when it inserted itself into the work of our duly sworn and totally independent reelection task force in April of 21. It didn't have that same concern, and I wish that it had, because it totally undermined the public trust in their process. And they were duly sworn, set of commissioners who had their own process, and it was interfered in by this commission, this Elections Commission. Now, that undermines public trust in this commission. And this commission has had its own problems with public trust for the past couple of years now. And I think that's why we heard Commissioner Crowley a moment ago say that it's important for us to build credibility and trust with the mayor and the public supervisors. And this commission needs to do just that, build commission, or build trust with the mayor and the public supervisors. I agree with Commissioner Crowley. Now, I'm going to leave it at that for the moment, and I have some other comments to close with and public comment. But thank you very much, you guys, for going through the discussion on this.
Thank you. Any other public comments for this in the room? You also are welcome to just stand, or whatever, like, come on after, come to the front.
Okay. Well, hello, everybody, my name is Brett Turner, I'm fellow of Trent, I alluded to, we've been on this, I think Ronnie Dugger started this in 1988, and I've been working out myself for over twenty years, and stand on the shoulders of those who've learned that have done the heavy lifting. Just throw some, some language at you, some words you might want to write down and research later because of my short time period to speak. But Open Voting Consortium is the group that did the heavy lifting on this initially, and that is the design concept. And the GPL, under your GPL, General Public License, that's the guidance that Voting Works now follows, is based on this heavy lifting that was done by Open Voting Consortium. I take pride in being known as the catalyst for the Voting Systems Task Force that occurred. I prompted Tom O'Neal and Chris Natalie to form that commission, and I served as a secretary for CAVO, who you've heard reference. That is a group set up to provide education to election officials and to encourage counties to share in this work of open source software. I have zero association with Voting Works, and I only speak for myself here. Just so you know, the certification process that we reference casually is completely broken right now, so that's a hoax. It's being sort of tossed around casually, but the father of that certification system admits candidly that the system will remain broken until we get proprietary code out of this. This is a very black and white, simple issue. If you don't want to know what's going on and you want lax security, keep using proprietary intellectual property protected software code in your voting system. If you do want to know what's going on and heighten the security, you have to use open source software. There is no if, ands, or buts, and this discussion has been concluded for the past thirty years. So the public will probably never be able to grasp what open source means or understand any of this, but hopefully the secretaries are safe and the procurement people will understand what we're talking about. The missing link here that is confusing everybody is that Microsoft, working through the vendors and infecting John Ernst, they blocked this in San Francisco. So they will never do open source as long as John Ernst is here. I know you have the ability to fire him, but you have not done that in the past, which is unfortunate, but we advocated for him to be terminated fifteen years ago, ten years ago, because we predicted this would happen, and it did. We also predicted that when we procured $300 million for Los Angeles to do this, that they would fall prey to what we call open washers, a group called OSAT, and that money would disappear. And it did, and we predicted that it would. So now when you go back to the legislature and you say, what happened? They say, well, we already gave you $300 million. So that's problematic. I'll go very quickly and wrap up here. Just so you know, disclosed software is not open source. So when you say somebody's going to disclose it, that doesn't mean that it's open source. So that's another little point of confusion that I don't want to fall prey to, and.
I'm sorry, Mr. Turner, three minutes are up.
Okay.
Well, please filter and send your comments in.
No, that's okay, I don't come in front of you often, I've suffered from cancer, and I'm making a little comeback, which allows me to appear here today, but I'm always available, and I appreciate the work Chris has done with Trent and everybody else. If we could get this done for the sake of the United States, it would be great. It's embarrassing that Mississippi and New Hampshire are ahead of us now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're always willing to send your writing as well.
My name is Tim Mayer, and I was on that San Francisco Voting Task Force. So we spent two years sitting around the table talking emotionally BS, because it was a very simple issue, this is not complicated. Open source, publicly owned software, you will not get security in voting ever, ever, ever with proprietary. It's never going to happen. So if it doesn't matter to you, understood. But then you'll get, you know, folks that are able to capitalize on that issue. Folks that will challenge the presidential election, you remember that? That will occur again, absolutely will occur again. And we have to provide it once. So there's a lot of misdirection, a lot of distraction, but it's simple, this is not complicated. Open source, publicly owned, accessible software, it's just not more complicated than that. So we talked a lot about complication, and we've revised that. But it is important to have that one particular part of any voting system, one particular part, open source, publicly owned, voting software, for the calculation and capture vote. So I appreciate your time, and this is the most intelligent conversation I've heard on this subject matter ever. You guys have done really well, I'm so impressed, you understood all the subject matter, I'm like, yikes. So I really appreciate it over that, but don't get distracted and don't get misdirected, because there is only one issue. That's it, open source, publicly owned, accessible software. Very simple, great job, Chris, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Is there any, does it, is there any other comments?
There are a lot.
Thank you so much, and big thank you to Vice President Jerron, this has been something we've talked about for quite some time, so.
Oh, you did?
Take this good stab, I think we're really lucky to have all the work that you've done. Okay, so I know, I'm, I'm just going to close out, agenda item number five, I know everyone is anxious to leave. I did want to talk about a few special projects and updates, but I can, I guess I'll move a couple of those items to our December meeting. I do want to introduce the packet item a little bit. For folks, it did arrive late, so I had planned to just kind of give everyone context, because I had no idea that my office was so large, so I do apologize for that. Kind of learning to see it, really. So I'll give you, I'm just going to kind of give, read through this at a high level. The context is, you know, the San Francisco Elections Commission, as we talked about it earlier, was, it's, it's, the inaugural commission was started in 2002, and in its first year, there was, they faced enormous headaches, litigation, the role of the directors, budget mismanagement, operational failures, et cetera. And the commission, in its first year, to work on the challenging, is in the area of the new mandate as an oversight body, they focused on specifically trying to help the Department of Elections build an infrastructure that would allow it to operate independently and autonomously. Previously, the department hadn't run that way. The goal of the Elections Commission was really to insulate the department from political interference from electeds. So that, and that is, as we all likely know, why there are seven different appointed bodies for the Elections Commission. It's a unique body in that regard. And the commission in that first year prioritized passing policies, priorities, and bylaws that would help facilitate that level of independence, that focused on three things, space, structure, and staff. And it proved to really lay a solid foundation for the department that through the leadership of the director, John, who was the first, who was at the time, he was a provisional director in the Elections Commission, hired him as full-time director, and you were following him. We were actually made to work in the interim here. But in the two decades since then, the commission itself hasn't had that same level of investment in systemization and structure and operating procedures. We do have our bylaws that continue to have been updated over the last two decades, but I think there have been a variety of reasons that have contributed to the commission's, you know, lack of, not always a lot in progress, but it's lack of, let's say, consistency and structure in how it operates, and I'll give you some examples of what I mean by that in a moment. But there are a few reasons that I wanted to cite. I mean, first and foremost, our five-year terms, future maximum, the fact that we elect new officers every year to manage the operations, the secretaries of staff, any business, and we don't really have a budget, and we, yeah, we don't have a budget. And then also, we have had significant turnover, so not that often do we see that commissioners are serving their full potential ten years. So we have a lot of turnover from commissioners to secretary. And it's caused a lot, in my, from my perspective, I don't explain why, I think that's been, made it harder to be able to really build that infrastructure. It's that the bylaws have really become kind of the North Star. When I joined, or when I became president earlier this year, I recognized, I felt very unsure of how to actually be effective as president. And that started by simply just recognizing that we don't actually have a late enough period. There's no time between one president to the next, before we have to start, you know, December to January, we have regular meetings. You're just, or rather, January to February, you just start anew. So that was the immediate, the immediate thing I recognized. But then there are also circumstantial things that were going on when I became president that I think also added to my very large level of exasperation when I joined. First of all, the city was transitioning to new websites, so lots of things were changing. Our website was completely done voluntarily by our phenomenal vice president, who helped lead that effort, but it also required him to learn how to do that process, and us, me relying on him to help instill continuity, so we kept things updated. We also didn't have a secretary at the time, we were vacant for, I don't know, five months. I would have worked with my process for a secretary, it was not clear, and then you had to do onboarding. There are also some technical issues that we, everyone was facing in our meeting facilitation, specifically from the transition to, from fully hybrid, fully remote meetings during, you know, the height of COVID, to coming back in person and trying to operate both. Again, another piece of it is, I was relying on the bylaws and, you know, the vice president's historical knowledge to learn how to run the meetings, how to facilitate, how to set up the room, you know, what are we accountable for. There weren't, there wasn't like a standard full drive where we had access to all these little templates. And then, of course, just the basic ongoing commission requests, train new commissioners that join, and then the last but more obvious one that we've talked about jokingly is, we had unprecedented, unprecedented long meetings. And so I basically tried to untangle a lot and rebuild at the same time. So I really started by going through the discovery process of what we have, what processes we have, what we don't have, where are, you know, where do we find those, how do we centralize them? Some of these happened as they were requested, for example, commissioners asking, well, I have a conflict, what do we do this? I don't know, what's our process? So starting to just build the plan while we fly it, but then also identifying gaps that we will need. And really, the goal is to build a centralized repository of resources, procedures, and materials that will allow future commissions to not have to be distracted and to really focus on its mandate of carrying out oversight for the Department of Elections. We are a volunteer body, but I think it is, it is absolutely imperative that if we're going to be volunteer, but actually, a more fully effective volunteer body, we have the tools to do that. So I just provided a high-level list here of some of the processes that I've either fully developed or begun to develop. When Secretary Davis joined us, I had actually built a, like, a pretty robust checklist for, of secretary responsibilities, meeting facilitation responsibilities, which actually the commissioner dies from learning with because of the fierce, the fierce meeting rooms I provided, a list of how, of kind of the checklist of that process. And then also, just like officer checklist, we're basically going through the bylaws, because there were a handful of things in our bylaws that we were not complying with, that now we are looking to comply with, but also city compliance, things that the city asks us to do that we haven't been doing, or that. to do that we haven't been doing, or that I didn't know that we need to do, and putting it all into an officer responsibility guide, and some other things in here. So this is just kind of a snapshot of what's already been in development or have released some bare bones to it. Happy to share those specific ones if you have, if you have interest in those. But really, the next phase of this is what I hoped to present more or less today. Definitely wasn't able to get it all, or not get it yet, but definitely progress has been made. The final outline is to centralize and digitize. So there are two components of this. So I mentioned the rule is this robust Rules of Order document that has all our rules, that has structure, access to templates and things of that, not templates, but processes and procedures, even, you know, like Robert's rules, for example, like we're not really following that, I don't have to reference that, like putting it into something that could back, that will be available for every commissioner going forward and listed on the website, so that members of the public have access to it as well. And the second piece of it is the digitization. So I mentioned this in a meeting earlier this year, but Secretary Davis and I started going through file cabinets with the Department of Elections, and we have two decades worth of paper materials and records, and a task that I hope to refer to the BoPAC committee is being able to incorporate funds for, funds for us to digitize these records and make them accessible to the public. And so on the last page, and there's, this is really more just an FYI, you'll see kind of the table of contents of what I've been working with for the, this new Rules of Order. It is not exhaustive, but it is what I already started developing. Like, so this is just the outline, but I actually already have the lead for many parts of this. I just don't have a complete version to share with you today. So if you're familiar with the Board of Supervisors Rules of Order, it's very, it's very helpful. Are's would be similar, but it will have also many differences in the idea of being that, you know, when I'm on bond for this mission, that I, people will, it will be easier for commissioner, new commissioners, or officers, or the public to all understand how we operate and, at least any time at all. So I just wanted to share this initiative. I've kind of hinted at it for months and give you insight into what is already being worked on, and I'll continue to share progress as we go. And I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise we can, you know, just move to, yeah.
I would just say that this is a big lift, bringing order to what was not ordered at all. And I think bringing Secretary Davis on is the biggest addition in terms of just helping us all and helping you, but I just want to thank you for taking the initiative. Not many people would do this. Not many people would have the visualization skills to do this, but this certainly will serve future commissions well. We're blessed to have you, your leadership and your excitement.
Thanks.
I have a little comment that she was saying, and also, you know, thanks for sharing all this with us. What do you need from us to help you with any of this? You know, it is a big lift. I have a tiny sense of how much time to actually put into this position. So, other than just wait, you know, what are, what are the next steps, or what do you want?
Thank you for asking, and I also know that we have to go, so.
That's it. It's your best.
And we'll, we'll wrap in like two minutes, go to General Public, and then adjourn. So I think for now, you know, take a look, if you have feedback, you know, let's keep talking about it in our meeting, in our, in the commission meetings. I felt as though I'd been talking about this for a long time and hadn't actually put anything on the paper, and there's a lot of value to just share, being more transparent with these things. And yes, it is a lift. I've also been working on it for almost a year now, so it's, and people ask me for things, right? So if I ask, hey, where's this? I'm hot, I got to put together this process, so I just add it to the folder of all the processes that I've been developing, like putting things on the website and things like that. So if there are processes that you feel are not mentioned in here that you think would need, I know everyone's going to mention it onward, already, already got that very, very far down the road, et cetera. If there are things in here that you think are missing, or that you want to make sure is included, let me know. We'll keep talking about it, and then as I have a version to show you, I will share it. It won't be immediate, it's going to be continued, you know, I have, ideally, I want this mission early for years, so it will continue to be something I work on. Not for three years, but, you know, over the next year, definitely. Commissioner Davis?
Yeah. It's great to get some visibility in something that we've been working on, and you've had a mention of before, and a fabulous, between some of these process oriented to, sets an infrastructure and receivers in place, and yes, I have benefited, shared some of these initial process techniques, so thank you for that. I did want to mention that at our last meeting, there were some requests for like all the past annual reports, and I noticed, for example, as Commissioner Parker and I are working on this final quarter, there are missing minutes from last year, including our site, and I don't even know if they were ever created or not. I checked with the legislature on it. Wasn't sure either, like the special reading from April 8th.
I wasn't the president last year.
No, I know. What I'm just saying that it's not, it's one of those missing minutes, and I don't know if they were ever created, so that's, that's one that, you know, that I noticed that was on the archive website, that the meetings are simply missing, and I don't know if they were created or not. So I think there, there's some basic documentation that, that might be helpful to prioritize and create some more on the site, like past annual reports, or making sure all the minutes are there.
Yeah, I just, yes, I know this is a massive task, and it's also thankless, so thank you for your time. I just had one question. Is the Rules of Order, is that like one giant document, or is it going to be like a thing?
Yeah, the table kind of just kind of blocks, shows you where, it looks like there are three separate sections. It is kind of massive. It will not include all of the, the, every single process that's in here. I think one of the things I'm also trying to work on, we, Maurice and I have created a OneDrive, but we want to make it available, but the challenge that I've, the biggest thing I've said, even though it would be a really massive document, things get so lost between commissions. So I am so certain that they, our systems and structure was probably developed at some point, and it's just nowhere. So we don't have, like, I think there is a benefit to having one massive document in some regard as well, where it's just one sent to one thing. We are working on website updates, including the annual report and moving the pipe. The structure of the annual reports is something Maurice and I, who, Secretary Davis, have been working on. So it will help to be able to put it on the website, but I think for right now, I'm trying to focus on one centralized document, that's higher than to a lot of other things.
So it's going to be public?
Yes.
So it's in the form of?
It'll be public, yes.
Form of stuff. That makes me laugh. Just because, you're right. I just went through this, I'm reading this job, and this president's a hundred percent confident, I have frozen out, it was so valuable.
Right. It just gets awesome. And that's, that's, I hope this is the first one.
Well, that's sometimes it's been, it goes on to this individual drives where, you know, and so when you have it in a centralized place, like the website, it's a lot harder to, you know, because, just.
Yeah, good for you.
Is there anything else? Okay. Let's move to the public comment. And I'll just postpone all of some other stuff, just, that's all. Any in person?
On this side.
On this item. Anyone who just wants to?
On this item.
Just this item. Anyone online?
No.
Okay, we'll close out of agenda item number six, and move to general public comment.
Alan Buradell. And I'll add a little Commissioner Crowley's comment on your initiative, President Stone. I think it's fantastic. Just a couple of comments here. I came last meeting that you had, and there were 20 or so members of the public that joined me. And at this meeting, almost every one of them, when they spoke, they talked about how they did not want you to make recommendations in this redistricting reform work that you're producing, not to make recommendations. And then following the public comment from these 20 or so members of the public, some of the conversation between you all centered around how to frame the work. And some of the comments were to characterize it as best practices or something different from recommendations. And I just want to speak for these people again and say that whether we call them best practices, recommendations, suggestions, all of that puts your thumb on a scale of, of this initiative, okay? That's coming to you from political parties, political players, in office common cause, the orders. And it's wrong. It's what's giving this commission a hard time maintaining its trust and credibility in the public. And I just want to encourage you not to characterize it as anything like a recommendation or a best practices or anything of that nature. Finally, I would point to how Commissioner Loebolzey and Commissioner Dai both mentioned that the Board of Supervisors is going to do what they're going to do. And so if that's true, why do you need to have any standard approval or thumb on the scale with regards to this work? They're going to do what they're going to do. Why put yourself in this position to, to make such a framing of a work? Okay? And then finally, Commissioner Parker had a great comment at that meeting and suggested that we find a way to make inclusion for the public comments that we gather during these meetings. And I, of course, am wholeheartedly interested in that happening, so hopefully we'll find a way to make that happen. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public commenters online?
No.
Okay. No further public commenters. We'll try to, and I will just call them.
Thank you. You have your comments.